Equally distributed. When a community starts to feel that there's just no hope for the next generation, I think that moves far beyond being just an economic problem. That becomes something at the root of many of the social problems and political divisions that we see in our society today.
John Friedman chairs the economics department at Brown University, and he tracks economic mobility at Opportunity Insights, the research and policy institute at Harvard. John, thanks for the time.
Thank you so much, Scott.
And today in our podcast, Here and Now Anytime, author Clint Smith talks about his new book of poetry. It's called Above Ground. Smith reflects on fatherhood, the wonder of rediscovering the world through the eyes of his children, and balancing life's joys and struggles.
You know, that is the sort of ever-present tension of being a parent to a black child is how do you convey the realities of the world to your child to keep them safe while also wanting them to be a child and to not be encumbered by a legacy of racism, a legacy of violence, and to want them to be, have no limits, and to be limited only by the possibility of their imaginations.
That conversation on Here and Now Anytime, your destination for the day's top news. You can find it wherever you listen to podcasts. It's here and now.
Next time on The World, the peace deal signed in Northern Ireland 25 years ago changed people's lives.
There was always that continuing, underlying feeling of threat and violence, but that's gone.
Still, the full promise of the Belfast Agreement remains unfulfilled. As President Biden visits Northern Ireland, we examine the peace deal that is still a work in progress. It's on The World.
You can hear The World Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ. Support for Radio IQ comes from Steinway Carolinas, featuring the Steinway &amp; Sons Sperio, reproducing and recording piano, the marriage of technology and tradition. Learn more at steinwaycarolina.com.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston, where the program is produced, and your NPR station. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video, chat, or phone at betterhelp.com-public.
It's Here and Now. A new study finds that about one in six kids with autism are expelled from preschools and daycares. The average age that happens is just under three and a half years old. Getting expelled can have devastating consequences for kids and their families. Let's bring in one of the co-authors of the study, Jan Blatcher. She's a research professor at the University of California, Riverside Graduate School of Education. Jan, welcome.
Thank you. Nice to be here, Deepa.
Thanks, Jan. So you've been doing research on autism for years, but this finding about expulsion levels for autistic children is disturbing. Expulsion seems like such a serious intervention. How does it happen?
Well, yes, it is serious, and it's very sobering when you think about it. These little three-year-old kids already have a record, if you will, and many of them, in our sample, were expelled from, more often from a private than a public, program. It happens because most of the children who were expelled due to their behavior, you know, temper tantrums, hitting, yelling. But those behaviors themselves tell us something. They shouldn't be immediately construed as being bad behaviors, but my collaborator and I, Dr. Abby Eisenhower, would say that those behaviors are related to the autism themselves.
You know, it makes me think, Jan, children at that young age are learning how to interact, how to control feelings. Aren't teachers supposed to be the ones who help all children learn these skills? I mean, all children can have temper tantrums or express their emotions through what might seem like violence, like hitting or kicking.
That's a really good point, but remember, we're talking about children who are in preschool or childcare programs, and very often, those teachers are not credentialed and they don't have the required courses in autism. So it may be that they don't understand autism, or they see these behaviors as something that needs to be fixed or eliminated. And what's the easiest fix? Just remove them from the classroom. Also, the teachers may have unrealistic expectations of what, quote, "school readiness" is. And when they impose those expectations on children that do have trouble communicating, you have a bit of a conflict.
You know, I want to ask you what happens after children get expelled, because I imagine it causes a lot of stress on parents and kids. They have to find a new school, the kids have to meet new friends. You know, do we know yet how the expulsions affect kids and their families longer term?
Absolutely. I mean, it's really detrimental. Think about just the children themselves, right? Their peers and the parents of their peers can't help thinking, what's wrong with this child? And this negative view of that child could stay with the autistic child for a long time. And more importantly, there are downstream effects on the children themselves. You're removing them from their earliest school experience, which has to make them feel isolated and marginalized. I recall a child who was in this study, who made it to kindergarten, and was interviewed by my team, and in the course of the interview, he said kindergarten is the loneliest place on earth. That gives legs to this problem, I think.
Yeah. You know, we know, Jan, also just in general, when we look at expulsion rates among preschoolers, that it's disproportionately young black children, children of color. Is that the same for children with autism?
You know, the large national studies did find that children of color were definitely targeted, as were children with disabilities at large. So in our study, we focused simply on autism. And viewed from the perspective of social justice then, this preschool expulsion really can be seen as somewhat of an educational equity issue, just as it is with the other kids. And what we worry more about is the intersectionality or the intersection of children of color and autism, because I think those are kids who are so at risk.
So, Jan, what interventions might help with this situation? Because it seems like we're blaming the kids for something that they're just learning how to manage.
All too often, professionals look to change or modify the autistic child's behavior in order to keep him in the program. But it may be that the program, the teacher or the organization that runs the program, needs to change.
Sounds like there needs to be an investment in training for teachers and directors of these programs.
Absolutely. You know, we asked teachers themselves what strategies they use to build good relationships with the young autistic children, and the responses were spend more one-to-one time with them, even if it's five minutes as they come through the door. Share in the child's special interests, and most importantly, make the child feel safe in the school environment.
Jan Blatcher is a research professor at UC Riverside. Thank you, Jan.
You're welcome.
And Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR, and Deepa Fernandez in Alameda, California.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the Museum of Sciences.
standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for April 11, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website, Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A, A1, roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, fellow board members?
No.
Mr. Kaywood?
Yes, Madam Chair. The staff would like to recommend that we add item D3, which would be a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and the Roanoke County School Board regarding joint capital funding.
Any objections to that change?
No.
Mr. Lubek?
I have no additions, thank you.
Briefings. Item C1, briefing to update the Board of Supervisors on the work being done by Shintel Glow Fiber. Chris Kyle, Vice President of Programming, Regulatory, and Business Development at Shintel. Welcome, Mr. Kyle.
Thank you so much. It's always great to be here in Roanoke County, Madam Chair and Board. I'm here, I want to talk about what you want to talk about. I've got a short PowerPoint, if that's okay. You can interrupt me while I'm talking. It's got some pictures. Here to talk about specifically some restoration gaps and issues that we are in the middle of correcting and look forward to answering your questions either during the presentation or at the end. I want to add also, we've been working with Mr. Kaywood, Madeline, Mr. Hunter in the back. There is weekly, if not daily, communication on this topic right now as we work through this topic. So just some background for where we've been and where we're going. We began construction in early 2022. We have constructed approximately 550 miles of fiber here in the county, so it's a big project, multimillion-dollar project. There are two parts of this project. There's the aerial part, 400 miles. Most of the mileage is aerial. We get the least amount of complaints, but as you'll see next on the next slide, when we bury our fiber in rights away, and especially, you know, on people's property, that's what drives a lot, and that's where we've had some gaps, especially around restoration work that we're working to correct. So at the end of March, Mr. Kaywood brought this to our attention, and we've been, as I said, working weekly and daily, trading information. What we can expect through the rest of this year is the pace right now of construction will wind down in August. So this project will be, you know, for the most part, done. There'll be a little bit that carries on past August, but you'll see our construction volume drop significantly come August. I wanted to put some pictures up here, if everybody can hear me, tell me if I need to be closer to the mic, about, you know, what happens in buried construction, and this is what's driving our complaints and the gaps that we fixed and are in the process of going back in time and fixing people that may have complained that we haven't fixed yet. So you can see the men digging by hand. Those are in the public rights away, but clearly attached to people's yards. And we also have customer notification, which I'll go into next. This just doesn't happen without us notifying people previously, but you can see the hand digging. We have machines that tunnel under the ground. Those machines can cause landscaping damage and pavement damage. Also, if we're going under a street, we have to pothole the street, and we are working through some topics, some issues right now to fix some street cuts, hardscape cuts that we've had. What we've identified, the vast majority of our problems, if you see the bottom three blocks, before leaving, we had a contractor not delivering on our construction standards before they left the premises, and then one month later. Some of the weather got into that, but that is not an excuse. We've got to get back. We've got to get places reseeded, replanted vegetation on grounds if it wasn't grass, replanted. So the vast majority of the troubles that we're going through and dealing with right now are restoration and landscaping. We do have some pavement roadway repairs, but we've also got just some messiness that, you know, should never have been, and we're working through cleaning that up. Okay. Where are we working? I thought, you know, this would matter. The county staff, county leadership has detailed maps, but you can see the ovals. This is where our crews will be working. When we're all said and done, approximately 20,000 homes, very good news, in these ovals, we'll have a competitive option with the most advanced telecommunications and fiber service available. But this is clearly, you know, where we've had the complaints, and I just wanted visually to point out where we're going. There is communication, customer communication, that is designed to prevent some of the confusion that has happened. What is helpful, if you are hearing citizens say they are not getting this, I can, I should have said, Stu Frakely is here also. We can be a conduit to track that down. But we've got a series of mailers and door hangers that go on people's property before we show up and start digging in the rights away. But one thing I wanted to point out today in yellow there, we've had this, and to the extent people are looking online, if they've got a trouble, we've got a trouble tracking system that, once they call in and that's logged, they'll have a trouble ticket, and we can report back to county staff as we work through those. And our intention is, here in the next few months, and this is what we're dealing with every week, working those issues, especially ones that have been outstanding for, say, 60 days, and drilling those down. So that's what I want to point out for the citizens. Our trouble ticketing system, they can call the 800 number listed, they can go online, or they can send us an email for that. I want to go to here. I can go back if need be, but right, you know, let's talk about what has happened and what we're going to do differently. I think that's important to talk about here. We had a meeting here at the end of March, when Mr. Kaywood brought this to our attention. With a new process, we had our senior leadership team for Construction and Operations in-market, this meeting happened here in Roanoke County. We have two days to respond and 15 days to resolve these restoration issues. Now, there may be an outlier if it's something more complicated. We'll always respond in two days, but the 15 days, depending on the issue or the trouble, we may not be perfect on that. But that is a standard that if you're hearing that's not happening, that's a big deal to us. Again, it shouldn't have been 30 days. I think there were citizens that had called in and weren't getting an answer back. And so that's part one of the triage that we're going through. The other focus here is, we're going to restore as we go. If you remember those pictures of someone digging in the front yard this evening that happened, we got out, our contractors got out ahead and didn't go back appropriately to reseed. So what we've done is lock them down, they're going to do parts of a neighborhood, and not only dig it, but reseed it before they move on to another part of the neighborhood, so we don't lose this. So restore as you go is a big focus. And then last of all, but not least, we've added additional oversight here in this market as we work towards August. Clearly, landscaping, spring's a big time of year, and I think that's another big part of that, part of this issue that we're working through, but we've got some extra landscape resources to take care of this. As I said earlier, consumer complaint research is ongoing. I talked about the ticket system. We are working details on the tickets. Daily, we're bringing in new tickets, whether new complaints, and adding them to their ticket system, regardless of how they come in, if Mr. Hunter or Mr. Kaywood bring them to our attention. We've had, and we have ongoing meetings with county leadership, and then I'm here today, and there'll be follow-ups after today as we work through this. At the end of the day, one of the slides I skipped over, if we don't have happy citizens as we're going through this multimillion-dollar project, we're not going to have customers at the end of it. So their natural force is driving us towards this. We had a great experience in Roanoke City, and, you know, I'm confident that with the changes we've put in place here, we're going to rectify this situation. So a lot of work has kicked off here in April, and then we're going to manage this through here on August. So I feel like I've talked more than I should have. I didn't mean to run on, but I'm here to answer your questions, at least with that introduction, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kyle, good to meet you in person. I know we talked last year when we had a problem at my house. There's folks in Holland's Court, there's folks in Plantation Grove, and there's folks in Hunt Ridge that I've heard from. And over those occurrences, I pass them on to Assistant County Administrator Doug Blot to handle with your folks in Glow Fiber. The restoration efforts that you referenced here beginning in early April, are those restoration efforts inclusive of last year's work that was done?
And not corrected? Yes, sir.
And not correct? Okay. So how are you going about that? Are you driving around the neighborhoods that you've finished and spot checking, or are you targeting specific addresses that you know of?
So twofold. We've got this ticket tracking system, and we're going back through all the tickets that may not have been closed out properly, re-researching those. The additional oversight in this market, which has just started, will involve some additional driving around. I think the process that I would design that needs to happen is, we are enlisting your support, Mr. Kaywood's support, with our own as we seek to find some of these issues. That's the problem, where we've, when we've had contractors leave an area before the QC, before the quality control was done, tracking them back down. So, you know, I'll say we've got a good system, a good plan in place, but it's not perfect. But I know we can get there with this multifaceted approach.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I know there may be some citizens contacting me about why you're back there again. The other day, I saw two huge trucks for Glow Fiber in the neighborhood, and I'm like, you all finished our neighborhood, why, what's going on? And I don't know if that was related to it or not. They looked more like utility trucks, like you were beginning an excavation somewhere else or working with the Water Authority on some project. I don't know. But this definitely is the right time to be doing that restoration work, because the grass seed season is, you know, winding down by the middle of May, probably certainly by June 1st. You're not going to get much to grow with the heat coming on.
That's right.
And another thing, too, just for the record, citizens that had restoration work or didn't have it, many of them went out on their own, and they planted seed, and they watered, and they took their time and expense to get their yards back to normal. And, you know, not that you probably have a list of those folks, but you need to keep that in mind when you're marketing your new service, I would think, because those folks might look for a little goodwill. They're not necessarily going to ask for reimbursement that they might think they should give, but you might want to keep that in mind when you're signing up new customers, especially if you've got a cross-reference record that they did have problems and there was a ticket at that address. You know, free service for a month, or maybe, you know, two months before the service starts, try us out, might be goodwill that goes a long way.
I think it's a great point. We'll definitely take that back to marketing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradford?
Yeah. Mr. Kyle, thank you so much for coming by and giving us, you know, a heads up on that. It looks like, from a constructive, construction perspective, you guys are coming in two or three trips to complete the work. Looks like you're burying the conduit, and you're going to come back and pull the wire, and then you've got a third crew that's going to do the restoration. Is that?
That's right.
Sorry, that's working? Okay. And so, taking the August, I guess your material, you have all your material here? Okay, so we're good on that?
We do, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Well, just, I want to thank you for coming today, because this has been an ongoing issue, and it was kind of saddening me a little bit, because everybody was so excited at first to have some competition. They were tired of being, having Cox as the only option, and they were happy to have Glow Fiber come to market. And then we've had continual issues. I mean, I've met with the administration a number of times with issues in my district, but I'm glad that you're here, that you're willing to address it, and that it's on the forefront of y'all trying to make it right. We're going to make it right. We have to make this right. And, yeah, it, these are mistakes that should not have happened, but I'm confident we can fix them. And I'll say, when I talk to the citizens, and I made a lot of calls last week and this week, and I want you to know that you have seen your leadership at Shintel making outbound calls to citizens in Roanoke County. That's how serious we are taking this. The vast majority, you know, will say, I'll say, all of them that I've spoken to, we've got to fix this, we've got to plant the ground cover, but oh my gosh, I'm glad Shintel is bringing fiber optics to Roanoke County.
Good.
No, I'll, Mr. Kyle, I'll echo the other board members' comments, and thanking you to be here to address the problems that I think all of us have heard. In my neighborhood in Cave Spring, I think the problem really was, your guys came in, did the work, part of it, left, and then there was a gap before they came back and did the restoration, and then another gap. And that was, I think, the frustration element of it, because when they were there, they were in and out very quickly, and from what I could observe, appeared to do a really good job. I talked to a couple of foremen there, they were very informative, very polite, very helpful. I just think part of it was, as you work through the different stages of that restoration work, I think some of the delays were part of the problem.
Yes.
But your guys came back and did the work, and then they've reseeded it and put the straw down and all the other steps. And so that was positive. It just, I think it was the gaps between each, each element of that process was sort of the irritant and the aggravating component. But again, you're talking to the foreman and the guys working there, they're very polite, very helpful. Looks like to me, they did a pretty good job.
Good.
I think communication, there have been communication gaps here that could have helped a lot and taken a lot off your plate, and so it's duly noted, we're working on that.
We appreciate you being here. If there's no other comment or question, we'll move on. Thank you again.
Thank you.
We so appreciate it.
We look forward to coming back at a later date, once we've gotten through this, and it's going to be a very good news story.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item two, briefing to discuss with the Board of Supervisors, the Roanoke County Public Schools' proposed fiscal year 2023 through 2024 budget. Susan Peterson, Director of Finance, Roanoke County Public Schools. Dr. Ken Nicely, Superintendent, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. On behalf of Roanoke County Public Schools, it is our pleasure to present our 2023-2024 annual budget for your consideration. The school board adopted a budget reflecting investment of $280.7 million for the students of our community. You have a full copy of the budget attached to the board reports for your deep purview, and I'm going to try and use, I've never presented with a PowerPoint with, for you guys, so I'm going to try and get this to the pages that I would like to speak about. So first, I'd like to bring your attention to pages three to six. These pages detail the school's divisions, the school division's incremental revenue, and funded departmental requests for the general fund. This is our operating fund. At this time, with the information available to us from the Commonwealth and from the county, we estimate an extra 18.7 of additional revenue available to support the identified priorities. Fifty-three percent of our revenue comes from the state, and a large portion of the state revenue is based on March 31st average daily membership, also known as ADM. So estimating student enrollment is a critical step to building our budget. We look at grade progression calculations incorporating live birth data and compare it to the VDO estimates from the Wellton Cooper Center. These are pre-populated in our calculator tools. We chose an estimate between these two data points. Thirteen 238 was the grade level progression amount, and thirteen 612 was the VDOE estimate. So we landed on thirteen 375 for next year's budget. This is an increase of 192 students from the current year's budget of thirteen 183. The March 31, 2023 ADM has not been officially calculated, been officially published by the VDOE. They are calculating it currently. But our enrollment was thirteen 376, so do believe we are in the ballpark. For the 2023-2024 annual budget, the school division expects net revenue and the general fund to increase by 18.7 million. This is made up of an increase in state revenue of 7.7 million, an increase in the transfer from the county of 8 million, and a per, and a permanent transfer of revenue from the Technology Replacement Fund of 3 million that will then be turned around and turned into a transfer back to the Technology Replacement Fund through an annual transfer. On the expenditure side, it was the school board's focus again this year to focus on its employees. The school board requested and implemented the results of a compensation study that restructured both the teacher scale and the non-teacher scale. The cost to implement this plan, along with stipends and supplements, was $9.8 million. With this implementation, our teachers will see an overall average increase of 8.5% and our non-teachers will see an overall average increase of 7.2%. It has been a priority of the school division to improve the competitiveness of our teacher scale. The new scale will begin at 45,000 for a beginning teacher. However, our neighbors are starting currently between 46,725 or even 48,000, so we do have room to grow. Another employee-related priority was moving $465,000 for special ed hard-to-fill stipends into the regular budget. For the past few years, for school year 22 and 23, this is funded through our pandemic grants. So it is time to build the stipend into our ongoing budget. This is similar to a stipend offered by our neighbors. 1.3 million will be invested in instruction through school counseling, special education and pupil services, and instructional departments. These also include funds for instructional resources. 2.1 million will be invested in facilities, driven largely by inflation in our utilities and custodial contracted services. This will also increase, include our increase for the joint capital funding policy. 621,168 will be invested in maintenance, again driven by inflationary costs in addition to the CMP additional transfer. 1.2 million will be invested in transportation. Again, this is between inflationary needs, mostly related to diesel, along with fleet replacement needs as our fleet is aging and our maintenance costs are increasing. 3.9 million will be invested in technology. 3 million of this is related to revenues that are being transferred into the general fund, and then the rest will be for new money, redirected new money going into the tech fund. I kind of figured you didn't want me to sit here and read all of these pages to you. So the next page, page 40, I would like to bring your attention to, this is our budget by major classification. The definitions for the first eight items are on the next two pages. These are Virginia Department of Education definitions. I will not sit here and read these to you either. Pretty self-explanatory. But I would bring your attention to page 43, where we talk about the contingency reserves and non-categorical spending. Currently, we don't typically use contingency reserves as a function, which will be a major classification. However, going forward, it will be our intention to use this for major capital reserves and for the emergency, emergency reserve, both of which will be included at year-end when we carry over funds. These are just carryover funds, they are not beginning-of-the-year budget funds. So when these, we have transfers from either of these pots of money, we'll bring those requests to the Board of Supervisors for approval of use. The other category on this slide is the non-categorical spending, and those are items that are either proprietary in nature, including our health insurance funds, our dental insurance funds, and our risk management funds, or the OPEB trust fund and student activities that are excluded from any other category. So then finally, on page 44, we've got changes from prior ordinance. This provides a summary of some of the accounting changes that we have had to implement to limit the administrative burden from converting to using a reporting-only function to a binding, legally binding budget requirement, because this is kind of coming at us a little bit late in the game. So these are some things that we had to think about. One special note you would like, I would like to share with you is technology. Although we have a technology department, and much of our, our funds are directed to that department, back on page 13 is our textbook adoption plan. We have $1.8 million set aside to adopt the history curriculum. First off, VDO hasn't even provided us what these regulations are, but after they do, we have no idea the breakout between technology, which will be our digital content, and instruction, which will be our paper content. And so we're having to take guesses of how we, that would be split in the future, early on. So I can see some shifting for these, these purposes. Another area where I foresee changes is transfers. Currently, we operate two different accounting systems, one for school board and one for student activity funds. When the Government Accounting Standards Board implemented GASB 84 several years ago, we were required to take our student activity funds, which used to be a fiduciary fund, and pull them into our governmental funds. In doing this to ensure that all the transactions are accounted for properly, there are lots of transfers to shift the money back and forth because we don't want to show double expenditures in those final reportings. So these are just two areas that I wanted to bring to your attention that, that could require us to come back for approval for shifting money between these categories going forward. Roanoke County Schools, as you know, is a top-rated school division. We operate high-performing programs, and we remain prudent to our, our stewards of, we remain prudent fiscal stewards of the taxpayers' money. We value our relationship with Roanoke County Administration and Board of Supervisors and appreciate the financial commitment to quality educational opportunities that the Board of Supervisors provides to the Roanoke County School Board. So I'll go ahead and let Dr. Nicely come up and say a couple words.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today to present our FY24 budget for Roanoke County Public Schools. I want to commend Ms. Peterson for all her tireless, hard work on our behalf, and glad she is in charge of our finances because she has a firm control over those, those needs. A budget reflects the priorities of an organization, and if you'll indulge me for just a brief few minutes, I believe Roanoke County is a good story to tell. I still remember well the question that a parent asked me back in about 2016. We've been working for months with teachers, students, parents, and principals to answer fundamental questions such as, what should learning be about? What should it look like? What kind of classrooms and, and schools do we want for our children? Common themes had emerged by this point from input provided, and these common themes had been defined by aspirational statements. It was truly exciting to think that we could, as a school system, find a better balance between accreditation pressures derived from the one-shot multiple-choice SOL test and deeper, more authentic ways for students to demonstrate their learning. This is when we first began to talk about ideals such as skill building, valuing the ability to solve real-world problems, learning to collaborate in groups, and effective oral and written communication. Thanks to the vision of previous leaders to invest in technology resources, our students and teachers were well positioned to apply those resources in new ways. Two foundational documents were ready to launch, the RCPS Sea Change Framework and the corresponding RCPS Profile of a Graduate. In the midst of all these pieces coming together, a parent serving on our curriculum, instruction, and assessment team came up to me with obvious hope and excitement in his eyes. It was a great experience to be a part of. And I still remember the questions he posed. Is all of this real? Do you think we can really do this? These aspirational things that we had put together. I had spent my teaching and leadership career in Roanoke County and knew the visionary culture that had been fostered and the hunger that people had to take our teaching and learning experiences to the next level. I could confidently say yes. Fast forward a few years later, and with the detours taken through the pandemic, hopefully in our rearview mirror, RCPS continues charting a course toward making deeper learning experiences and preparing our, preparing every student and every school and every classroom to become opportunity-ready. The RCPS Sea Change Framework in action represents the actionable steps taken both at the division and school level to make the ideals of the RCPS Sea Change Framework a daily reality. When the RCPS Sea Change Framework was first introduced to school principals, a common response was, we're excited about this, but we fear it too will become just the latest flavor of the month. I'm grateful that our school board has continued over the past five years to affirm and support the vision that the RCPS Sea Change Framework represents, and the budget presented today is reflective of those continued priorities that guide strategic planning. Those priorities are centered on deeper learning, learning that's engaging and purposeful, and the development of requisite skills and mindsets that our students will need for future success. Deeper learning does not happen in a vacuum and must be supported by safe and secure learning environments, robust technology and instructional resources, well-maintained facilities, and most importantly, high-quality teaching and support staff. This budget represents an investment in those priorities, and we thank you, Board of Supervisors, for your support in approving our FY24 budget.
Thank you. So who has a question? Yes, Mr. North.
Just a comment and then a question, if you will. I tried not to ask a question, but I saw something, so I'm going to do that. I just want to thank you all for your time you've spent working on that school construction grant. I know it was time-consuming, and it came during the budget season, as unfortunately some things always do, but I'm hopeful that the time and attention you put into it and the voluminous document of support that you sent along will make Roanoke County known to those in Richmond. If they don't know us, they're going to know us after they read that document. But I also want to thank you and your school board for working with those members in the General Assembly on the Budget Appropriations Committee to bring our concerns to them. And I feel like we have made a huge step in bringing forward a concern over that scoring system that was shared by others around the Commonwealth. So thank you very much for that cold day in December. As we began the Christmas break, we made that trip up the road to Buchanan. And I want to thank, in particular, School Board Member Lyndon. Now, my question regarding the budget comes on the first page of that chart you put up there. It had a category known as payroll lapse. It looked like about $750,000 deducted. Was that carryover from this past year? Is that what that is to offset those revenues? Or what was that exactly?
Payroll lapse is just what it is. It's, we budgeted, and we have been budgeting it the past couple of years to offset our increases because we know every year we're going to end up having open positions. We're going to have employees come in that may make less than ones that are retiring at higher pay grades. And so we do build in a payroll lapse to ensure that there's not too much left on the table. However, we're getting really tight with our budget, and it's starting to make me nervous to put such large numbers in there. So we may not see those large lapses going forward.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mr. Radford?
I'm good.
You do have one, Mr. Peters?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. I, I'd asked this to my school board member, just for clarification, the, your percentage to your employees is 78%. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I have no problem with what you've presented as far as the actual budget. I do have a concern with the CIP as it stands today. It needs to be reflective of what's in the financial policy because as of today, we have no agreement on any of the schools or any of the construction projects, so it really needs to reflect what is actually in the policy until which time we come up to a mutual agreement. So that was my only concern that I wanted to bring forth in this document, that if we had to adopt it today, we really couldn't because the CIP does not reflect what's currently in our policy.
It is our intention, after both the school board and the Board of Supervisors come to, come to an agreement on the MOU, for us to bring a revised CIP.
Okay.
Mr. Murray? I just have a couple of quick questions. It jumped to my attention when you were talking about the average starting pay for Roanoke County versus some of our surrounding localities, and it sounded like it was fairly close, maybe within $1,000 or so. Is that accurate?
So the numbers that I, I shared of our neighbors, were there 23 numbers? And we're at 43 and 23. Where Roanoke City's at 48.
Okay.
So we are a little behind some of them.
On that beginning. Well, my question is, I, I've heard differing answers to this question. When we look at the mid-profession, so say, you know, 15, 20 years, does some of that even out? Or what does it look like at that point? And then at the end of a career, what does it look like in comparison? Have we looked at those adjustments that might be that we lag initially, but it's an awesome school system? And I'm just wondering if we catch up some middle and end?
Not as much as we would like. For example, like I think Franklin County, they hit their top at 15, 15 years, and you are at the top of your pay scale. And so you would compare our top of the pay scale to their year 15, and they're for 15 years earning what it takes 15 years for our people to get up to. And so there are a variety of things to think about. So looking at midpoint, you've got to look at which year is the neighbor's midpoint, and also what the top level is. And we are lagging, I think, in all three areas. We look at it at the beginning, at the midpoint, and at the end.
So in all three areas, it is lagging?
It is a little bit.
Okay. I had not understood that. Any other questions before we proceed? Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm sure you'll be back because the budget's not approved on a state level, probably until middle to late June, we heard. And the General Assembly's down there for the veto session, so I wouldn't expect any budget news to come out from what we heard this week.
I, I guess our kind of tentative plans are, after we hear about the tax rates today, we should get a final number about the transfer from the county. So we plan to bring the county transfer along with the CIP at a near-future meeting, and then at a far-future meeting revision. So two more revisions, probably.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it. Appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item D, new business resolution approving the Roanoke Regional Airport Commission budget for fiscal year 2023-2024. Mike Stewart, Executive Director, Roanoke Regional Airport Commission. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Supervisors, pleasure to be before you again. And I am accompanied today by our Roanoke County, one of our Roanoke County appointees to the commission, Gary Powers. David Jevons is our Director of Finance, and the newest member of our executive team, Eric Monday is our new General Counsel and Secretary to the Commission. It's my pleasure to present the budget to you for fiscal year 2024, and a separate list of expected capital expenditures that are expected to exceed $100,000 in cost and provide benefit of more than five years, or five or more years. As you can see, no deficits anticipated, therefore no additional appropriations are being requested from participating political subdivisions. Roanoke City approved the budget last, last week, and Salem City did last night, so can make it unanimous hopefully here today. We're projecting revenues of 17.222 million against O&amp;M expenses of $100,000. We're projecting revenues of $17.222 million against O&amp;M expenses of $11.753 for a net operating income of $5.468. The revenue does include 4.6 in pandemic-related grants, and we expect to expend all of our grant money from the CARES Act by February of '24. So we'll be back on supporting ourselves after that. Our budget is intentionally conservative. Radio agencies are projecting the aviation business kind of flattened out a little bit in the coming year. When you look at our growth, we're projecting our employment to grow about 2% next year, which is kind of getting back to where the normals used to be. We're still, for fiscal year '23, about 14% higher than we were in fiscal year '22, but we're still about that much short of the peak year of fiscal year '20. So still making our way back. Our largest revenue drivers besides the grants are expected to continue to be our parking operation and other terminal-related revenue streams. We've also had a nice cash position adjustment on our interest income on investments primarily due to the interest rate bump that we saw from the feds. Our expense increases are, as most areas, personnel-related, a 5% cost of living increase is anticipated for our employees. We added eight additional positions to get ourselves back up to staff. And we've got a 50% increase in our pension contributions and a 9% increase in our health insurance contributions. So all that's having an impact on our bottom line. But again, still, even without the grants, operating in the black and intend to keep it that way. On the capital list, nothing too exciting. We're replacing our end-of-life engineered material arresting system in runway 3-4. In a nutshell, that's the big sandbags at the end of the runway that keep anything going off into Peters Creek Road. It's the end-of-life, about 25 years old, and just needs to be replaced. Then we're doing some preliminary environmental work related to our potential master plan projects, and then everything else is kind of run-of-the-mill, replacing asphalt on runways and the mundane part of airport business. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. North?
Just thank you for coming, presenting your budget, letting us know what we can do to help get that airport expanded one day because that's a huge economic driver, and I'm gonna mention that in my comments later today.
Well, and I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you very much to the Supervisors for the legislative support that you gave us this year. That is very much appreciated, and although we may not have anything out there shovel-ready that we're looking for money right now, it's down the road, and we're gonna need all the help we can get, so we appreciate that very much.
Other people's money is always a good thing to go for.
Always.
Mr. Radford, any comments?
I'm good.
Any comments?
Mr. Stewart, this is a wonderful presentation. It's, I think, one of the better budgets because they don't ask us for any money, which is very positive.
We're trying to keep that way.
Seriously, though, I think this is probably, if you look back in time, this is probably one of the more successful regional initiatives that Roanoke County has undertaken with Roanoke City and Salem and the other, our other local government partners. And I think if you look back, this has been truly one of our great successes. And as Mr. North mentions, airport is absolutely critical to our future economic development success. So, Mike, thank you very much. Mr. Gust, you really didn't have to bring your attorney to protect you. You know, we're nice up here.
He was here for the real tough questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
I move the motion, Madam Chair.
And a second?
Second.
And with the clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Item number D2, A Resolution Setting the Allocation Percentage for Personal Property Tax Relief in Roanoke County for the 2023 Tax Year. Ms. Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Personal Property Tax Relief Act was established by the state of Virginia to provide tax relief to owners on the first $20,000 of value for their personal use motor vehicles. The tax relief block grant has been capped at $950 million for all Virginia localities since 2006. Our share of the block grant is $12.2 million. Each year, we are required to compute the amount of tax relief to allocate to each citizen's personal property tax bill. In previous years, the county calculated the reimbursement rate using the allocation model developed by the state. The model used historical trends and a five-year rolling average to calculate the rate. As background, for calendar year 2022, we experienced significant increases in assessed values on vehicles that would typically depreciate annually due to the unprecedented increase as a result of the inflation, supply chain issues, and consumer demand for vehicles. Based on this, the board adopted a rate larger than the percentage calculated by the state model. Since this time, a new personal property model has been developed by the COMIT staff to allocate the state block grant of $12.2 million. Based on this model, the calculated effective reimbursement rate for calendar year 2023 is 44.98%. However, for calendar year 2023, assessed values have come down from 2022 but still are not back to the level from 2021. Combined with the declining impact of the state personal property tax relief, and even with the proposed 10-cent cut in the personal property tax, we are still seeing an impact on personal property bills. As outlined in an email sent to the board on Friday, April 7th, in order to offer additional tax relief to our citizens, staff recommends a one-time allocation of approximately $3 million of personal property tax relief from the county above the state block grant, which will result in an increased personal property tax relief percentage of 56.1%. Again, this action is similar to the approach taken by the board for the 2022 calendar year. The state does require the board to adopt a resolution to set the personal property tax relief percentage each year. It is staff's recommendation to approve the revised resolution setting the PPTRA at 56.1%.
Any questions for staff?
Just want to comment that this is a, this is a strong, another step for the second year in a row, and we can do it for Roanoke County systematically without doing a refund, which is a costly and laborious effort. And I want to applaud staff for the research, especially you, Lori, and for everything you've done to soften this during a time of, of short monies, if you will, because of inflation. Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Madam Chair, I will make a quick comment. I am, I know this was brought to us about a year, a week ago, and I am glad to see it because we have often been looking for ways to, to help with our citizens, and even though we're gonna do something permanently on the tax rate, I was glad to see we were able to do something additional beyond that. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Just a note of clarification. The draft resolution that we have in our agenda is utilizing the 44.98%. We would, we would substitute the new resolution that's at 56.10%.
Yes, and it was Rock Redmond Day's decision that we adopt the revised resolution.
Awesome.
Yes.
Could you confirm the percentage, so I might?
56.1%.
Okay.
The revised revolution, resolution with a 56.1%.
Thank you. Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes, on the revised.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you very much. Item three, A Resolution Approving the Memorandum of Understanding Between the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and the Roanoke County School Board Regarding Joint Capital Funding. Mr. Richard Kaywood, County Administrator.
And also ask Ms. Owens to join me up here as well, in case you all have any deep financial questions about the MOU. Madam Chair, members of the board, we last shared the most recent draft of the MOU between the county board and the school board on March 14th. Since then, we have received some feedback from Roanoke County schools and made a few, what I think are relatively minor, changes to the MOU, and we have it in a form where I believe we can recommend your approval. The changes, in a nutshell, are as follows. First, and I think most importantly, instead of listing the elementary schools separately with a set $25 million per school, those are combined so that the total amount of funds allocated to the two of them together is $50 million, with the caveat that those funds cannot be repurposed to any other capital need but the CTE facility. And then just a general statement that the, well, the scales of the two projects may vary a little bit due to the enrollment, that the overall character and quality of the improvements should be similar. Other than that, there are no changes from the MOU that you reviewed on March 14th, I think other than added the word, a couple of wordsmithing changes that are very minor. And I believe the board has seen both this in kind of the final form as well as in track changes, and we'd be happy to address any questions you might have. But again, if there are none, we'd recommend your approval.
Are there any questions for staff?
Comment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to, I agree with the two elementary schools being lumped together because that gives them flexibility to, to share those funds back and forth. I know the footprint for Cundif is a little tighter, and they're gonna need some space and some more work there, so that one will probably cost a little more than Glen Cove, so that was a good suggestion.
Any other comments, Mr. North?
Just to comment, again, as in the case of thanking the schools for the work during their budget season on the school grant application with the Commonwealth, I want to thank our staff during budget season, working through all of the MOU iterations that we've been working on since last fall in 2022. And I think this is moving us towards a celebration of what this board can celebrate with our school board and for our citizens to meet a need for those two elementary schools, but most importantly also the CTE, which is going to help our economy and provide students with a future career path that they might not otherwise have. So thank you for that extra assignment. You'll enjoy the season much more after the budget is approved.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Just one comment that I'm very happy that we were able to come up with this revised MOU with representatives of the school board. In my mind, this, the other positive element is, I believe that this will accelerate the construction of these needed facilities. And I think we've been, we've been treading water for a little too long. We could have done this almost a year ago.
Yep.
And I thought that Mr. Peters and his discussions with some school board members was almost there, but in any event, I hope this will accelerate the process and we can get CTE constructed. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Peters?
Well, I am too glad to see you come to this point because, as I shared in many meetings, I have attended Hardy Road Elementary, now W. Cundif, and I know the challenges of the school, and I am, I am glad to see it take place. I am glad that, that our board members, we, we've come together. As Mr. North said, we have been, I know I have, and I know other members have, been trying to come up with an MOU since December. I made it very clear I wasn't pleased with that one because I was looking for a better way to shape it within our financial policy. I think this does that, and also allows us to get all these needed renovations done and a new CTE. So I'm very happy we're to this point and glad to support.
Great, thank you. I just will make a quick comment myself, and I appreciate the commentary regarding the hard work that has been going on and for the longevity of this discussion. It has been quite the lengthy task just to come to this agreement, even just with this board. But to your point, Mr. Mahoney, a year ago, we were making these discussion, having these discussions and, and have offered MOUs prior to this, but this is a good fit, and this needs to be done. So I appreciate all the enthusiasm surrounding this. I think this is a good day for us and for Roanoke County. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Madam Chair, I move the motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you. Item E, Public Hearing and Adoption of Resolution, Public Hearing for Citizen Comments on the Following Items, Calendar Year 2023 Real Estate, Personal Property, and Machinery and Tools Tax Rates. Ms. Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management Services.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comment on the calendar year 2023 real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools tax rates. Ms. Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management Services. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen comment on the calendar year 2023 real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools tax rates. The state code requires a public hearing to be held in advance of the adoption of the tax rates, and this public hearing satisfies this requirement. The adoption of all of these tax rates were preceded by a public hearing held on March 14th to receive written and oral comments on setting the maximum tax rates for calendar year 2023. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to satisfy, to satisfy the state code requirements and receive comment on the calendar year 2023 real estate, personal property, and machinery and tools tax rates.
Thank you. And so at this time, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, have we had any comments?
I have not gotten any requests to speak.
I have not had any either, so we will now close the public.
Madam Chair, have we asked anyone in the audience if they have anything to speak about?
No one has filled out a form. Is there anyone that would be willing to speak or wants to speak on this issue? Thank you. We will close the public hearing. And so, two, request to adopt the following tax rates. A, Resolution Setting the Tax Rate on Real Estate in the County of Roanoke for the calendar year 2023. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the motion, E2A, to set the tax rate at $1.06 on $100 of assessed value on real estate and mobile homes.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item B, Resolution Setting the Tax Levy on Personal Property Situate in the County of Roanoke for the calendar year 2023. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move a motion to, of item 2B, to set the tax levy on personal property, reducing it 10 cents to $3.40 per hundred for calendar year 2023.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item C, Resolution Setting the Tax Levy on a Classification of Personal Property, Machinery and Tools Situate in the County of Roanoke for Calendar Year 2023. Ms. Lori Gerhart.
There's no additional unless you have something.
Thank you. That's fine. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we set the tax levy on a classification of personal property, machinery, and tools at, and I don't have that number in front of me. Somebody, please give it to me.
280.
280.
280, thank you. $2.80, situate in the County of Roanoke for calendar year 2023.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item F, Appointments. Is there any board member that has an appointment that hasn't already been given to the clerk? There being none, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Is there any board member that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Mr. Mahoney, did you have a concern?
Yes, I would ask that we remove item G5, which is the Resolution Approving the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority Budget for Fiscal Year 2023-2024.
So we will go forward with approving the consent agenda, removing G5 regarding the RVRA budget. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk, please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, so we will discuss now, item G5, Resolution Approving the Roanoke Valley Resource Authority Budget for the Fiscal Year 2023-2024. Mr. Mahoney, I believe you had a couple of questions.
Yes, I will move to approve the budget, but I really wanted to discuss with the board members some areas that to me appear to be red flags, that we would be considering sometime in the future, particularly with some of the reserve funds. In our agenda, I don't have the corresponding number pages here, but in our agenda, around page 138 and also page 165, we talk about the Ruchrock Road landfill fund, and how that fund is about exhausted. And I think that worries me because I can remember going back in time how critical that was for not only the folks in East County, but indeed, all the citizens in the county. One of the problems with Ruchrock Road landfill, it leaches into the Roanoke River. And that's a big, that to me is a significant issue. So, I see an ongoing potential liability, even though, at least within the reserve funds, those reserve funds are being exhausted. The second concern area for me, and it's on page, I think, 148 of our agenda, and it might be page 14 in the reserve fund provisions here, the equipment funds. The equipment funds are going to go negative in 2025, 2026, and equipment is critical to the ongoing operation of the landfill. You're operating it every day, and you're wearing the stuff out. And then the third and final area, I think it's page 165 of our agenda, it might be page 30 in this document, looking at deficits for the CIP, probably starting 2029, 2030. So, again, I don't see an immediate problem this year. What I do see in the long run, whether it's Ruchrock Road, whether it's our equipment fund, whether it's other CIP funds, we're showing some deficits. And I see that as being scary, and the way you address that is increasing the tipping fee. And that has an adverse effect, I think, as we have seen in the past, not only for the local governments, but also when we try to work a contract with some of the commercial haulers.
Well, if I may.
Please.
First, Chair, Board, we appreciate you having us here tonight. Sorry Dan Miles was not able to attend, but I believe we are more than capable of answering the particular questions that were brought up by Mr. Mahoney. And first, I want to commend you on, you are correct in all assumptions to look at the budget in that manner, and we appreciate that, and they're very good questions that I hope to feel will make you feel a little more comfortable about today. I'll try to stay in line with the order that the questions were delivered. First, with discussions of the Ruchrock Road reserve fund. Historically, the landfill there has been a much more imminent concern regarding leach eight runoff. However, we've done great investments over the many years to improve our leach eight collection system, most notably with the addition of the forced main system, which helped tremendously. So, we got away from the traditional truck and haul method that had been used historically. Not only did it save significantly on operational funds, it also provided a much more secure, protected way to get that leach eight discharged directly into the sewer system where it can be treated properly. So, you were correct on that, and we have made great headway in improving that situation. However, it is a closed landfill, and you are right that with that, there are always outstanding liability concerns that you have to be mindful of. Previously, the previous budgets, it's always been the direction of the board to deplete that fund over time through previous actions. And this year was simply holding inconsistent with that to further make up reserves, and we have some additional costs that are coming online that were properly allocated to that fund with regards to landfill operational management concerns. So, it was presented by the RVRA board, including the Budget Committee, to continue that drawdown and complete that budget so that it is no longer shown on the budget books. However, that does not negate the authority's responsibility, nor the members' responsibility to backstop that with other reserve funds. But there should, there are means and methods by which we can do that through the existing reserves, should that ever become a problem. Additionally, that landfill is actually dated to go outside of monitoring over the next couple of years. Whether that actually comes to fruition is a different story, and I would not want to say anything other than that because it does require multiple DQ approvals to get to that point.
Well, just in my experience, I had really thought that we would end monitoring with Dixie Caverns, and I can't seem to, I can't seem to get away from Dixie Caverns, even though that's been 30 years. It just, no, I appreciate that. I was just worried that as that fund was exhausted, I just thought that the only source of funds would be the other reserve funds, or the post-closure funds, which are really designated more for the new facility.
Correct, correct. And we do recognize that we are depleting that fund intentionally at this point to more of a accounting mechanism than anything that will assess us through our accounting and our future budget. We are not disillusioned in any way that that concern or liability goes away, so that's why I commend you on your highlighting that because you are correct. And we fully recognize that at staff level as well as the board. I guess we'll move on to your second point, if I recall correctly, was regarding the equipment fund. I also share your concerns with that, as does the rest of the staff and the board. What we have been doing is, quite honestly, for lack of a better term, rather than Peter to pay Paul for quite some time, as we've been going through a long transition process. And we've been operating very much in survival mode with regards to equipment being a fairly large expense item that we did a really good job for the last several years managing by extending its life. However, if you'll notice, if you look over the last couple of years budget, you'll see ever ballooning operational costs with regards to that equipment. Maintenance and repairs goes up. You squeeze longer life out of equipment, you're going to have increased costs in operating that equipment. We are looking to provide an avenue out of that. This, the budget presented in front of you is the first budget we've had in the last couple of years where we are confidently come to you saying, we are now looking to positively fund our reserves with regard specifically to equipment. We have been on equipment hold, even in the years that we have approved funds, we have withheld spending those funds until much later in the fiscal year to ensure that everything else is shored up and takes top priority. We have been working with our board over the last couple of months to do some strategic planning and put out a much longer-term picture so that everyone has a proper understanding of what those deficits look like and how we can intervene and prevent those from occurring. I feel like we have a pretty good plan of action that has support from our board that will, in all likelihood, have us back before this board in the future, looking at possible amendments to our special use permit, as the road has, the addition of the road has proven successful in the fact that we have opened new avenues by which we can generate revenues that previously were not online. If you'll notice in this board, in this budget that's presented for you today, we're actually having an increase in revenues this year of about $1 million over what was anticipated. Now, we do have additional deficits that we're countering, much of that having to do with inflation and some cost of equipment and fuel, such as we discussed earlier. But the long and short is, we fully recognize that we have a looming problem out in the distance, and we are working strategically to intersect and come up with ways to prevent that. And you were correct on, one of the ways is always raise tipping rates, but that's a balancing act in itself, as we do not wish to run off commercial business, and we're also always looking at the best interest of our member communities. And we're always really working hard to keep those rates as close to flat as we can within reason. As you'll see, this year's budget did keep the member use rate at $55. That was a conscious decision, understanding that it could have, it would have been very easy to justify an increase with the, with the financial climate being what it is. We did not feel that was the best move going forward at this time. In the future, we hope to avoid that by seeking new sources of revenue as opposed to just tacking on and increasing fees. We understand that that is part of our future, both on the commercial side and looking out for our member communities, is to hold the fees, if not stagnant by no means, but in line or certainly competitive with any alternate options that one might have, including the members. I think we've done that on the short term. I think our strategic planning that we're working with our board does that on the long term, and when I speak in long term, I'm looking at 15, 20, 25-year long-term strategic planning, and we're pretty heavily into that. I think we've had at least two extensive work sessions on it to this point, projecting that and seeking new revenue sources. One additional revenue source that I do not mind mentioning at this point is, we are working at some gas development and some alternate things that have recently been off the table, that we now are right around the corner of closing a deal there that will be yet another revenue source into multiples of millions of dollars over the life of the project. So, we are certainly looking at innovative ways to control the tipping fee while ensuring that we can get ahead of those deficits that are projected.
Thank you.
And I believe there was a third question that I think I was going to.
Well, that was more just CIP. Heading out, I think it was 2029, 2030, you started showing some significant deficits. And again, both with the CIP and the equipment, my optimism was, as we transitioned away from the railroad equipment, which was very expensive to maintain, because I know you couldn't find the companies anymore to repair that, because we bought a lot of that equipment, I guess what, from Germany back in the 90s?
Correct.
I thought a lot of those costs were there, and so going to the new method would have alleviated some of that. And then when I saw the deficits really kicking up for CIP being out 2029, 2030, it's easy to, for us, we tend to focus more on our annual budget, and it's hard to look out that far. But seeing those deficits there, that to me was, again, a red flag, just as the equipment part was a red flag.
Yeah. And again, you're very astute to ask that very question, and I appreciate it. What we have done this year, we actually revisit our CIP plan in a more comprehensive approach this year, now that we are beyond the days of the train. The first thing that we unfortunately had to make concessions in over the last several years were CIP-related projects, things that we could delay or push off to a better time. And we have been through better part of six years of that being our planning, almost in a work-backwards method. This year, because we do see the securing of our revenue stream, and we are looking at new ways to operate, and we did see efficiencies in equipment, and I'll talk to that in a second, we went through and we were saying, hey, what are our actual priorities? Let's revisit it, and let's lay them out as though we know that it should be, recognizing in 10 years out, five years out, there are going to be some ebb and flows to that CIP plan by the very nature. But what we've provided to you today is a true reinvent or revisit of our CIP planning to account what our true needs are, where historically over the last couple of years, I believe we've probably underfunded that or understated what those needs were because we were prepared to do what was necessary to continue to operate within budget. Regarding the train impact on equipment, I can say, we did a reduction of about 30% to 35% in our fleet size at the Smith Gap landfill, most of that being in articulating haul trucks, which was significant, very good timing with fuel skyrocketing the way it has over the last year, year-plus. So, that was a huge reduction in that single operation. However, the size and scale of the operations at the transfer stations did not have the same impact. They are kind of business as usual. But we did see that, and if you would look back at the historical, especially the previous, the last two years of the tipper operation, having the tipper offline has been a huge savings in understanding that most of those expenses were not captured in the budget because they were pulled directly out of reserves as reactionary. So, we are seeing increased efficiencies in equipment. We have less equipment on our schedule to replace. However, we are being more aggressive, trying to get ourselves back to where we used to be and would like to be again, to where we're not holding equipment well beyond its useful life. So, that's a lot of what you're seeing there, is us pulling down that window a little bit so that we're not running equipment well beyond its useful life.
Can that answer your questions, Mr. Mahoney?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it. That was very thorough. Does anybody else have any other commentary briefly?
No, that was about the most thorough report I've seen for the RVRA.
It was very thorough response, and we appreciate that so much, thank you.
Well, I appreciate it, and we're certainly here to answer any additional questions you might have.
I think we're good.
I would move the approval of the resolution approving the RVRA budget.
Second.
Thank you.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Did I, was there a second?
There was.
There was a second. Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you very much, we so appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Item H is citizen comments and communications, and I believe we have Mr. Scaff here tonight. Let's see, Mr. William Scaff, if you'd please come forward, and we know you, but for the record, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My statement is entitled, "Recommendations for Constitutional Government." After four years, 21 prepared statements, and rezoning, and written and oral comments, I would like to respectfully make some recommendations regarding the structure of the county government that handles development, the responsiveness of the planning process, and individual supervisors' approach to governance. Government structure. The Planning Commission is led by the Director of Planning and to all appearances operates as an extension of the Planning Department, helping to create and then approving its recommendations. This is a conflict of interest if impartial judgment is sought. Planning Commission members are affiliated with the construction business, and they ultimately see as their primary mission facilitating development. For zoning code revisions and rezonings, they tend to favor the larger and the commercial. These commissioners are naturally unlikely to vote against developers, contractors, subcontractors, suppliers, architects, et cetera, because they constitute their world. I respectfully recommend that the county name this group what it really is, a developers' commission, and establish a separate group, a true planning commission consisting of five residents who are not affiliated with any facet of the greater construction business. Each commission would consider the same issues, hold separate meetings, hear the exact same presentations, and take separate votes. The outcomes of both votes and the relevant reasons would be included in separate reports to the board. Sure to this, I suggest expanding the current planning commission to six members through being outside the entire development industry. If the board does not move to correct this systemic problem, the impartial evaluation of rezonings, development projects, changes to the zoning code, and comprehensive plans will continue to be a pretense. Government responsiveness. How faithful and forthcoming is the planning process? Or does the Planning Department implement preconceived policy preferences? There are soft documents, such as comprehensive plans and specific location reimagined plans, and there are hard documents, such as design guidelines and the county code, such as zoning ordinance, use and design standards. Then Chairman Mahoney explained the difference during the Barnett rezoning hearing using future land use designations. Neighborhood conservation and transition are a guide. It's not an ordinance, not a mandated requirement. With soft documents, the Planning Department arranges public meetings, online surveys, and community participation reports. In the hard documents phase, accuracy and explicitness begin to disappear. Consider the design principle, quote, "Encourage development within developed suburban areas in order to protect the rural areas of the county and natural resources," unquote. This rests on the department's fabrication that somehow suburban residents do not care about their proximity to nature in order to justify unleashing density development. In the final reimagined 419 designed guidelines of August, key numbers are hard to find, such as eight-story buildings covering 90% of the site. For zoning code revisions, there are no public meetings with before and after diagrams on walls showing changes in height and bulk of buildings, and not coverage allowed. What remains is the Planning Department quietly implementing its policies through number-based binding. binding ordinances. In fact, Rono County 200 can be significantly redirected during the zoning ordinance rewrite process, which occurs after board adoption of the plan. Respectfully, how much longer will the Director of Planning be allowed to pursue development preferences diametrically opposed to those of the vast majority of people who are living here, are living in or who want to live in Rono County? Surveys indicate that people overwhelmingly choose Rono County for rustically landscaped suburbia, not characteristically urban density development. Approach to governing. The preoccupation with growth, population, or commercial by the board, the commission, and the county government can violate residents' property rights, particularly when commercial enterprises or density development are forced into and eliminate residential areas. Site-specific residential and rural zonings are changed by board rezonings all the time. If there remains limited land for development, violating residents' property rights is certainly not the way to create more. The relatively small percentage of the county's own residential or commercial nevertheless provides ample tax revenue. Stability is not an economic problem for Rono County. We are a self-sufficient and self-sustaining economic system, and our population is readily replenished by relatively quick property turnaround. Respectfully, individual supervisors cannot operate as an elite. For instance, if individual board members can disregard such critical development criteria as future land use designations, as we have seen, then how important to board decisions can the comprehensive plan actually be? Individual members are not entitled to vote according to their personal vision of the county and its neighborhoods, and that gives largely specious or inconsequential reasons that are transparent to the rest of us. This kind of libertarianism is antithetical to a democratic constitutional republic. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Scaff. Let's see, item I, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item J, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Mahoney, you are first.
Nothing.
Mr. Radford?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Now that we've got the MOU in route, and we've been working with our school board members on the acceleration for the borrowing and the construction, I really want to point out to our school board and our school administration, we really need to look at solar for our schools. There are still huge tax credits out there. From the information that I discovered when I took the tour of the solar schools in South Carolina, there's still a lot of benefit that we can achieve at these schools. Even though they're being renovated, you can still put them up on top of the roofs, even the new one. So, I would hope they would still consider that and look at that. The tax credits are larger. They were about to expire, and then they came. They've been renewed with the Inflation Reduction Act that's at the federal level right now.
Five years, isn't it?
Five years, yeah. Another item is, when I was touring those schools, their mechanical equipment was all self-enclosed on the top of those structures. If you do the schools all together in a group, you can have efficiency with purchasing. I would hope that they would consider looking at that. And then, you know, most of today's computer modeling for HVAC systems, electrical systems, you can do that to figure out what your energy consumption is along with your energy savings. So, I would hope that they would look at that in detail. Of course, we're not going to tell them what to do, but in my research, I found that I think our county can pay benefits by them turning the corner and utilizing solar on their new CTE and considering it for their renovation for the two elementary schools. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say again that I am appreciative of the board coming together for the MOU. I felt like I personally had a lot of time invested in it when I was chair a couple of years ago, putting the Citizens Committee together and trying to really work towards getting the CTE done, because I do understand, as someone who's on the street every day listening to my businesses, who are looking for skilled labor, and I think that this is a huge step in the right direction. I'm thankful that the last offer of the MOU was acceptable to the board, and then we came together, and hopefully we'll get the, I'd love to have unanimous vote on the school side, so we can move this forward. The other thing that I want to bring up, and I've already had a little bit of conversation with Mr. K. Wood regarding this, something else I have been a huge advocate for on my time on the board is our public safety, and we have made great strides to provide our citizens with the best, whether it's our police, fire rescue, or sheriff's department. We have implemented a pay scale that has cost us over ten million dollars to implement over three years, because as we've all said as a board, if you don't have a, you can have the best schools, you can have the best parks, you can have the best everything, but if you don't have a safe community, you've got nothing. So, something else has come to my attention over the last several months. As many of you know, I still am a part of fire and rescue and volunteer side. Concerns come to me that we're, in my district especially, we are spending a lot of time running calls in Beaufort County. And this came to me by way of several individuals within the department and citizens who are aware of this. Many of you have probably read that Beaufort County is looking to cut their tax rate by nine cents, and some on the board are wanting to cut it by twelve cents. And my problem with that is, they have a huge deficit in their fire and rescue. I personally have put a lot of time and energy into getting our system up to where it is today, along with the board, it's not just me, it's a group effort. And to have our resources forty-five minutes down the road in Beaufort County is not serving our citizens. So, I'm asking, with the board's permission, that we give direction to our county administration and to our fire chief to enter into some conversations with Beaufort County. I did get the numbers last week, I believe, on how many calls we have ran in Beaufort County. I think that we need to address that, because again, I've already had the situation where both the vent and fire truck and ambulance, paid staff, are in Beaufort County, and then someone in our district needs an ambulance, and we've got to wait for either Mount Pleasant or Roanoke City to show up. Our citizens are paying for the service, and when we're reciprocating services, such as we do with Roanoke City, we have a mutual aid agreement with them, and it's truly, we reciprocate, you know, all the services. But I'd like to see it, I don't like to see it being one-sided, because again, our citizens are paying for that.
Can I just interject here?
Absolutely.
Because I understand what you're saying about Beaufort County, but I'm wondering if some of our other neighboring localities are having the same experience, that I know that there was a volunteer station that was just in the news in Montgomery County, being closed on our end of the county, and so I'm curious what the issues here are for all of our surrounding communities. I do feel like there's, it's something that is of great expense to our citizens, and you know, you never want to be unneighborly.
Right.
And at the same time, we are paying the price.
And that's my feeling, is that our citizens are paying that price. If I'm not mistaken, fire and rescue is our largest department as far as our budget. And so, that's my concern, is that we have put a lot of time and energy, prior boards have put a time and energy into getting an ambulance there, the goal, I think, was have one within six minutes, but we can't do that if we're elsewhere. And if they're not willing to step up their game, if they're in the building process, that they're trying to get their staffing to where it needs to be, I'm okay with that. But, you know, it's getting to be more and more of an issue, and I want to address that for our citizens that are paying for the service. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Mr. North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We've accomplished much this year so far. The staff and the board have been very busy working with the budget. Since November, we've worked on several different iterations addressing the three schools' construction proposals, all the while focusing on lower tax rates, both real estate and personal property. We should be proud of everything we've done in those areas. I know that many members on this board feel the same way. All of these proposed changes were done within the financial guidelines. It's good. It's a win-win for the schools, the county, and we should be celebrating soon, I hope. Over the weekend, our staff and board received a note from a citizen thanking us for the school construction proposal. They offered to even help with any state grant support. Such notes are rare, but they are appreciated. Lastly, our recent school construction proposal that we approved today by board vote unanimously for a hundred and thirty million dollars is symbolic for two reasons. Number one, it's the largest capital projects in the history of Rono County. And second, it affirms this board's support and its investment in our schools' capital. Because this board supports our schools, never been a doubt within our financial guidelines, and we've done so without raising personal property taxes or any other tax to support these efforts that we are putting on the table and investing in. Every single one of us in this county should count our blessings, today and every day. Many counties around the Commonwealth can't say that, especially in southwest Virginia. Meanwhile, the state budget conference, you'd think would be back in Richmond, but yet they're going back for the veto session tomorrow, they've indicated recently that a final budget, the state budget won't be ready until June. We all know there are never, there are always many needs, but there's never enough money to go around, especially facing the headwinds of an economic downturn, possibly the second half of this year, and let's hope it's a mild one. The current state budget has proposed over two-hundred million dollars of funding for Interstate sixty-four east of Richmond, while none exists for exits one thirty-seven to one twenty-eight southbound on I-81, passing through Rono County with a high estimated cost of three hundred million dollars. Regional efforts trying to seek state funds during recent V-DOT smart-scale efforts presented before the Commonwealth Transportation Board were not successful. As a matter of fact, the project rated close to the very bottom of the smart-scale results for round five. Transportation begets economic development. I-81 is the busiest corridor, commercial corridor, in the United States. Improve I-81 is an ongoing project, and it always will be. We will never catch up. The budget in the Commonwealth provides for a public-private study to address I-81 and how we can improve and widen its corridor. Here's another example, our regional airport. We need a runway expansion to meet business economic development, not to mention lower airfares, as many local flyers, some fifty percent of the population of flyers, drive to Charlotte for lower airfares rather than fly ROA. What's wrong with this picture? Recently, an economic development back-of-the-envelope study done by the Regional Partnership at the request of Delegate Austin estimated a one-point-six-billion-dollar, ten-year economic impact. The state budget currently has in it two-hundred thousand earmarked for a study on airport expansion, and I hope that that passes when the budget passes in June, if it does pass. So you can see, consider joining our efforts, fellow citizens, and tell our regional, local, state, and federal leaders of your support for these transportation improvements in our part of the state. It really matters if you reach out and contact them by email and/or letters. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. North. I will just end our comment period with a quick comment regarding how proud I am of this board. I really applaud the work that has gone forward with negotiating, with trying to get these schools completed, with making offers, with negotiating and continuing to make efforts to meet in the middle, and this has been going on for quite some time, and I appreciate the work that has happened here. I look forward to, I'm hopeful for, a unanimous vote on the school board. This is a project that has been sought after for both boards for a long time, and it's time to sign the document and need that done quickly. With that being said, I'm going to go on to reading of a closed session, item K pursuant to the Code of Virginia as follows. I move to go into closed session pursuant to Code of Virginia, section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-dot-A-three, to discuss or consider the acquisition of real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Specifically, the board will consider the acquisition of potential property for parks, recreation, and tourism in the Catawba Magisterial District. And, section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-A-five, discussion concerning the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business's or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, namely in the Catawba, Hollins, and Venton Magisterial Districts. And, section two-point-two-dash-three-seven-one-one-dot-A-dot-one, discussion of the performance and/or compensation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of Roanoke County, namely the elected constitutional officers, county administrator, and county attorney. Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, so we will now go to recess to the third floor for the closed session. Thank you very much.